It's almost fourteen billion dollars. It's a big bank.
Yeah, it was basically, it was basically, it was basically, what was it? Basically Howard Bank and Sandy Springwell like the last one before F and B bought that one, right?
Well, you had a bunch, you had, you had, uh...
Does Fulton also have a lot?
All right, good evening, public board members. We're gonna start in just a minute. But I wanted to remind you about your microphones because we start the meeting. Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 2nd, 2023, meeting of the Baltimore County Planning Board. It is now called to order. I'm the Chairwoman Nancy Hafford, and I will now start the meeting with a roll call. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Arey.
Aye.
Ms. Brophy.
Aye.
Mr. Fotis. Ms. German.
Aye.
Ms. Heckman, Mr. Heckman.
Aye.
Is your wife here, too? Mr. Heinel. Mr. Halepka.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGuinness.
Aye.
Mr. Pirlo. Ms. Panera. Mr. Warren.
Aye.
Ms. Wolfson.
Aye.
Will you now join me in saying the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Benzley, are there any changes to the tentative agendas published?
No changes, Madam Chair.
In the January 26, 2023 email, you received draft minutes from the January 19th meeting. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the draft minutes? Any corrections? If not, may I entertain a motion to accept the minutes as they've been circulated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. First on our agenda is the introduction of the Baltimore County zoning regulations, section 1B01.3A4, from Ms. Sally Nash and staff from the Department of Permits and Approval and Inspection. They're here with us this evening to present the form to the board. Please welcome Mrs. Nash.
All right, good afternoon, everyone. Nice to see you. My name is Sally Nash. I'm the Deputy Director of Permits, Approvals, and Inspections. We will actually be coming to you in a few months with our updated policy manuals. We're updating our Development Management Manual, our Development Plans Review Manual, and our zoning policy manual. So we will have a lot to discuss in a few months. I'm here today with a form that, I take it is a little unusual to bring a form to you for approval, but the process to get this form approved is dictated in the code. Section 1B01.3A4 says it needs to go to the Office of Law, who helped us draft it and approved it, then go to the ALJ for their approval, which they have done, and I provided that letter to you, and then come to you for your approval. Just of the form is notifying buyers of a property that there is a development plan associated with the property. So we want to make sure, you know, they know, they might want to come look at the plan and the conditions of the plan and how it was approved. So that is basically the purpose of the form. I think it's pretty straightforward, additional language added by the law to protect Baltimore County. Are there any questions about the form?
Is there a reason why the plans are only available in hard copy and aren't posted on the Baltimore County's website?
Well, we are working on having all of those scanned, and in the future, they will be. So we will have to update this. But right now, not all of them are scanned. So some of the older plans, which this form would also apply to, exist only on paper. We're working on it. It's just a lot, there's a lot of paper over there. It's boxes.
Thank you.
Are there any other forms that the county requires be handed out?
There are not, oh, well, there are other similar forms, but they're mostly, they're not exactly forms per se, but there are notices that are required to go on the final development plan that advise people of certain things, like, for example, when a develop, when there's going to be front-footage fees for water and sewer, and in a development, that plant, that notice has to go on the plat itself before it can get approved. So buyers are aware that, you know, when they buy a property, oh, heads up, you're gonna have to be paying these fees for 30 years.
And I guess I ask that, that I'm the Planning Board representative on landmark preservation, and as I recall, is there anything like that? If I buy a historic property that says I have certain rules and obligations I have to abide by? I mean, this is, I know this, I just was curious if that was...
Yes, it's part of the notices and disclosures. When you buy a property in Baltimore County, the property owner fills it out, and then the buyer, like, confirms that they've read it, and it also provides historic preservation's contact information if someone would want to verify that information.
I was just thinking about that the other day. Thank you.
I just, I'm familiar with the topic.
Yeah.
Mr. Warren.
My question is, who is responsible? So, if I sold a property, I wouldn't know if I need to give, is this, is this part of, like, a licensing thing? Would the title companies or the real estate agents know this is part of their licensing to do this?
That has been the subject of some internal debate because we are unsure how we would go about enforcing this, but we, we have an outreach plan. If you, this body approves the form, we're going to reach out to the Board of Realtors, to mortgage companies, title companies, to let them know, please make sure you know that this form is required. I think that is a problem, just because we're not gonna always be involved in that process.
If that, that would be the second part of the question is, if the title, if they ask title companies to do this, then the title company's gonna have to send somebody up here every time they have a property to see that there's a development plan, right?
No, it's just really let you know there's a development plan, and then if...
Well, how do they know there's a development plan?
Well, they could call on us. Almost every property has a, a development plan. If it's, you know, part of a subdivision, something like that.
Okay.
If it's just a, a one-lot development, it, it probably won't. But if it's part of a, you know, a bigger development, it would.
What prompted the change, or this new form? What were you using before this form? And I guess I'm just curious, what prompted the change to this form here?
Well, as I mentioned, we're going through our zoning code and updating our policy manual. We did not know about this form requirement in the code until we were going through that process. And actually, another thing that happened is that someone asked for the form. And, and we, you know, I, I don't know if there was a gap in time where someone used to know about the form, and there was a form, but as far as we know today, no such form has ever existed, and no one has ever asked for it before. So, you know, this is us addressing an issue from, from before, which we were unaware of.
Any other questions? Not hearing any? May I entertain a motion?
Be it moved that a public hearing be set for Thursday, February 16th, 2023, at 5:00 P. M. regarding the Baltimore County zoning regulations, section 1B01.3.8.4 form.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Motion carries. As a reminder, the public hearing will be in person on February 16th, and the board is tentatively scheduled to vote on the matter immediately following the public hearing. This evening, we have an opportunity for further discussion and then vote on the updates to the Comprehensive Manual of Development Policy, Section 3, Commercial Development Within the Urban-Rural Demarcation Line. This item was first introduced to the board on January 5th, 2023, and a public hearing was conducted on January 19th, 2023. The staff from the Department of Planning are here to answer any further questions that the board may have as we discuss and then before we take a vote. Would Ms. Nugent from the Planning Department like to add anything further this evening?
Hi, good evening. I don't have anything further to add beyond what you all received ahead of time, which were the requests and responses to the written testimony as well as the oral testimony from the last meeting. So if there are any further questions, I'm just here to entertain those as well.
Board members, any questions? If there are no further questions, then I'll entertain a motion.
Be it moved that the Planning Board recommends the adoption by the County Council of the Comprehensive Manual of Development Policy, CMDP, Section 3, Commercial Development Within the Urban-Rural Demarcation Line, as submitted by the Department of Planning.
And now we have a mo, may we have a motion? In a second?
Second.
And then I'm gonna take a roll call to make sure we have everybody's voice here. Mr. Arey. Mr. Fotis. Ms. German.
Aye.
Mr. Heckman.
Aye.
Heinel's not here. Mr. Halepka.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson. Mr. McGuinness.
Aye.
Pirlo's not here. Ms. Panera's not here. Mr. Warren.
Opposed.
Ms. Wolfson.
Aye.
Ms. Brophy.
Aye.
Motion carries. Ms. Benzley will now fill us in on legislation recently passed by the County Council following our last meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Resolution 1-23, BCPS Review of Proposed Land Dedication. A resolution of the Baltimore County Council requesting Baltimore County Public Schools to review and evaluate the suitability of land proposed to be dedicated to the county as outlined in Resolution 3922 for use as a vocational school or, in the alternative, an elementary, middle, or high school. On November 7th, 2022, the County Council enacted Resolution 3922, which approved the continued review of the planned unit development application from BC Middle River LLC for the redevelopment of a 400.6-acre site commonly known as the Lafarge Quarry. The resolution states that the PUD applicant is to provide a capital improvement benefit in the form of 221 acres dedicated of land in fee to Baltimore County, of which a 40-acre portion is to be utilized for the construction of a vocational school. Resolution 1-23 requests BCPS to review and evaluate the suitability of the land proposed to be dedicated to the county as outlined in Resolution 3922 for use as a vocational school or, in the alternative, as an elementary school, a middle school, or a high school, and to provide its findings to County Council by February 17th, 2023. That concludes the report.
Thank you so much. Ms. Taylor, this is the conclusion of our agenda. We'll reconvene at 4:30 for a public hearing. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
See you all in 17 minutes. There you go.
Madam Chair, we have a vote as for discussion. We had a negative vote on the one thing.
I did.
Did you answer?
Yeah, I did.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
As for the discussion, I just voted against.
Yeah, so that, thank you, dear. All right, good evening, everyone. It is now 4:30, and we would like to call the Planning Board meeting this hearing to order. My name is Nancy Hafford. I'm the Chair of the Baltimore County Planning Board, and we will now start with a roll call. For our members that are here, please say aye when you hear your name called. Mr. Arey.
Aye.
Ms. Brophy.
Aye.
Mr. Fotis. Ms. German.
Aye.
Ms., Mr. Heckman.
Aye.
Mr. Heinel. Mr. Halepka.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson. Mr. McGuinness.
Aye.
Mr. Pirlo. Ms. Panero. Mr. Warren.
Aye.
Ms. Wolfson.
Aye.
Thank you. At the January 19th, 2023, meeting of the Planning Board, Ms. Jeanette... I don't wanna... I, that's what I said. Applauso. Of the Department of Public Works and Transportation, introduce the annual basic service maps. Tonight, Ms. Applauso is here to further present the maps to the board. Following Ms. Applauso's presentation, members of the public will have an opportunity to speak. Please join me in welcoming Ms. Applauso.
Hi, thank you for allowing us to speak, Chairwoman Hafford and members of the board. My name is Jeanette Applauso, and, and I'm an engineer in the sewer design section at DPWNT. And I'm joined by my fellow engineers, Chris Niebry, Dave Bayers, and Lisa Colts. We are here to present a more detailed account of the 2023 draft basic sewer maps for public water, sewer, and transportation. I want to do a little recap of what I talked about last meeting. For those of you who were not here, defining what deficient area is. A deficiency, a deficiency in the water system is defined by failing fire flow tests that measures the residual water pressure at the nearest public fire hydrant. A deficiency in the public sewer system is determined by a lack of capacity to convey existing sewage flows. And a deficiency in the transportation system is determined by a lack of capacity to provide a standard level of service within arterial and arterial collector intersections. Level of service designations of E and F are considered to be deficient. I will discuss the basic service maps for the water. Mr. Bayer will discuss the sewer maps, and Mr. Niebry will discuss the transportation. For the 2023, there's water, it's... Can't see it. There's the entire map shown here. There are no dis, there's no deficient areas for water. That blue, that blue section up here would indicate a deficiency. You can see there are no deficiencies in Baltimore County for wire, water. This means that all fire flow tests meet or exceed the required water pressure. Fire flow testing standards are determined by the National Board of Fire Underwriters. A required pressure of 20 PSI for effect, is required for effective firefighting. The city of Baltimore is the owner of the public water system and performs fire hydrant tests on a nine-year cycle. There are 14,536 fire hydrants in the county and 8,883 fire hydrants in the city. Now, I will turn the presentation over to Mr. Bayer for discussion on the 2023 basic service maps for sewer.
Good afternoon, or is it good evening? I, I don't know. And Madam Chair and members of the board. My name, as Ms. Applauso said, my name is David Bayer. I represent the Department of Public Works and Transportation Sewer Design Section. I'm gonna discuss the basic services map related to sewer deficiencies and areas of special concern. I think I'll do what I did last year, which I gave you an idea or explained why they are on, these areas are on the map. And then I'll give you an idea of what the Department of Public Works and Transportation has been doing and will be doing in the future to try to get these eliminator removed from the map. I'll start in the upper right-hand corner. It's a Ristland Manor area neighborhood. It's a wastewater treatment plant that Baltimore County operates. During heavy rains, that treatment plant becomes overwhelmed, and that's then defined by the state as a deficient when it's more than 80% at capacity. So what we've done is we've done a couple rehabilitation projects, and they weren't quite as successful as we had thought. So we're, next step we're gonna do is design a pumping station. So that will allow us to eliminate the wastewater treatment plant. The notice to proceed on the design of that pumping station was just issued, I think, last month. So that project has started moving forward. Thank you for moving the slides around a little bit for me. Appreciate that. If you can go a little further to the left, I'm gonna discuss the Brooklynville area, which is Joppa and Falls Road area. That's a, a area of special concern. And again, that has, during heavy rain, the sewer system's unable to convey the wastewater. So that's why it's on the map. There are two projects moving through the development process, and those subdivisions are required to do the necessary improvements to add capacity to the collection system. And once that work is done, then we can hopefully remove that area from the area of special concern. If you slide back to the right, the other, other way, that's the Parkville area. There are four, what we call sanitary sewer overflow structures that are existing. And those structures, actually, when, when the sewer system gets overwhelmed, that they discharge water into the streams or into the storm drains. So we've done a lot of rehabilitation in that area. By rehabilitation, we insert a liner into the sewer and try to eliminate the cracks and fractures where the groundwater gets into the system. And that ends up overwhelming the sanitary sewer system. Those weren't as effective as we thought, so we have started construction of a relief sewer that extends basically from the city-county line up to Taylor Avenue. That project is about 90% complete. And we have another project that started construction last December. That's about 25% complete, and that's another relief sewer. And we hope that those sewers will add enough capacity that we can then eliminate those for, those areas, that area from the basic services map. If you could scroll a little, slide a little to, further to the left, in the Pikesville area, there's another SSO structure at Marnat, Marnat Road. There it is. Thank you. And that, that's another area where, when the heavy rain occurs, the sewer system's overwhelmed, and it discharges raw wastewater into a culvert, which eventually gets into the Jones Falls. It's another area where we've done a lot of rehabilitation over the last couple of years, eliminated a lot of illegal connections with, that could be a roof leader or a sound pump connecting illegally to the sewer system. So those have been eliminated, but we weren't as successful as we thought. That particular location, we need improvements by Baltimore City to their sewer system, and they're working towards that. Design hasn't started yet, but they're working towards that. And hopefully, when they do their construction, we can eliminate that area from the special concern, area of special concern from the basic services map. Go a little further to the left, you'll see there are four more SSO structures, sanitary sewer overflow structures, again, where those discharge raw wastewater to the storm drain or to the powder mill in this instance. We did a whole lot of rehabilitation in that area as well. So again, we inserted a liner and tried to eliminate the cracks and leaks that was allowing groundwater to get into the sewer system. That wasn't successful, as we had hoped. So we designed and built a relief sewer, and that was finished last year. And we just issued a notice to proceed on another relief sewer last month, and that construction should start later this month. And hopefully, once that relief sewer is done, we'll be able to eliminate this area of special concern from the basic services map. And the last area, the very bottom, thank you very much. There are four more SSO structures, sanitary sewer overflow structures in that area. Same kind of situation, that they discharge raw wastewater to the stream or to a culvert when the sewer system gets overwhelmed. We did a lot of rehabilitation, built a lot of relief sewers in that area. Wasn't as successful as we had hoped. And this also needs improvements by Baltimore City to their sewer, sewer drainage system downstream. And once those, that project is done, we can hopefully eliminate this area as well. Anybody has any questions? Yes? Yes.
The downtown, you know, the, the places that you're going to all seem to be on the far right. Is it because it backs up throughout the purple area? I'm trying to understand several of them, it's like seeing where you were focusing in the area were very different.
Yeah, that's, so everything in that purple area contributes to the sewer system where those four yellow overflow structures are located. So we don't want to have additional permits issued for construction within those areas. Yes?
Mr. Warren?
How do we force the city? I mean, it sounds like three of these issues are city-driven, so...
Correct. Yeah, so we've been talking to the city. The city's under consent order, same as Baltimore County is. So they are required to do certain improvements and get those approved by Department of Justice, Environmental Protection Agency, and Maryland Department of Environment. So they have to submit a plan for approval, and once they do that, we'll comment on that and, and point out that the city needs to improve those, their system, in order for us to eliminate these. So we... No, but the Department of Justice and, and EPA and MDE can.
Ms. Trachman.
One question. For years, I've been hearing about this broken sewer line under Lake Roland, and yet it doesn't appear to affect us. So is that out of your purview, but it doesn't affect us, or?
That is a sewer that we noticed when we did some closed-circuit television, had some problems with it. It's not broken, but it has some things that we're concerned about. So we're gonna do a project to work and try to fix that. That's in design now, but that's not related to an area of special concern that has...
It hasn't caused any...
Capacity problem, no.
Capacity problems, correct.
Yeah, correct. It's like a maintenance problem, so...
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Yes.
I've been hearing over and over again that the patches have not worked.
Unfortunately.
Now, are these the liners?
No, the liners are successful, but sometimes what happens is we don't always target the correct area, and we can't get the water out, that groundwater, out of the system. And I will say, sometimes it's a, it's a result of the private house connections, so we're not allowed to go on the private side. We have to work on the public side. So unfortunately, yes, we're not always successful as we had hoped.
And, and just quickly, how, how thick are the liners? I mean, how much do they reduce the capacity?
Yeah, it's a couple millimeters. So, but it depends on, those liners are, are designed for the specific circumstances, so... But it doesn't reduce the capacity, because somebody could argue that it's now more slippery because it's plastic.
Thank you.
Go on.
I'm curious. It could, at some point, not necessarily for this year, but could we, is there a comparable map for Baltimore City? I, because I would be curious. I mean, I think what we've been hearing is that until the city fixes some of theirs, I'd be sort of curious, like, well, how far is the city along with their material? And being able to sort of see how those things tie together as opposed to a big white blob.
Yeah, I don't think they have a map like this of, like, for example, areas of special concerns or deficient areas.
Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, we do do that, yes. These were not discovered that way. These were discovered because over the years, they were... These were discovered because, over the years, they were, these sanitary sewer overflow structures were built to prevent backups into basements. So that's how these were discovered. But yes, we do, we evaluate our collection system every time a subdivision comes through the development process. And then we also are constantly evaluating the impacts of dry weather and also wet weather on the collection system. And just as an example, I probably have about one hundred and fifty flow monitors or sensors in the sewer system right now. So we're actively trying to figure out what's going on.
So do you see repeated issues in these areas?
We start in a particular area and see if we can find any problems, and then we'll do a little more intense evaluation or study in those areas. But we move all the way through, all the way around through the county. So for example, now I'm on that area right over there, which I call the Patapsco Sewer Shed. It's in the Catanceville area. We're also in the Jones Falls area where that pipe under Lake Roland is. So we're doing flow monitoring with sensors and flow monitors all over the county. We shift them all over. Does that answer your question?
Do you plan to coordinate with the city?
Yes.
So what you're saying, the only way that you can solve a problem with the city is through the Justice Department?
No. Yes, we do. Correct. Yes, we do.
And there's no, so there's always an impact?
Not always. Not always. But sometimes there is. But yes, we coordinate with the city all the time. Try to partner with them.
The city's got to do this as well. I retire from the state. Difficult to coordinate with the city.
We don't have a difficulty, but sometimes there's a disagreement over what improvement might be necessary.
And you're not involved cost? We should raise the cost?
It might involve cost. Yes, it could. Yes.
Thank you. Board members, any other questions? I have one. How often does it overflow these different areas, like?
Depends on the amount of rainfall. So some of them are more active than others, those four right there.
A couple times a year?
Yeah, yes.
More than that? Lots?
Well, 2018, we had twice as much rain as we normally would have had, so they were very active.
Okay.
So it depends on the amount of rain.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, no other questions? For Ms. Plaza or anybody in her department? Are we, no other questions? If not?
We also have the transportation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Members of the board, hello. My name is Christopher Nebre. I'm from the Bureau of Transportation, and I'm Division Chief for Traffic Engineering. I'm here to present the 2023 Basic Service Transportation Map. The basic services of the transportation map shows the deficient zones for traffic sheds at around signalized intersections in Baltimore County. In Baltimore County, we monitor all traffic signals in the county. The ones that are from the previous Basic Service Maps showing D, E, and F intersections, they're counted yearly. And other, all other intersections, we count in a three-year cycle to see if they have moved from a lower grade into a more failing grade. These, the criteria for the grading of these intersections are based off a load factor analysis. Traffic loads, by definition, are times when the green time has failed to serve the queue. So how that is observed in the field is we look at the last car in queue when it turns green, and if that car does not make it through the green cycle, we consider that a failed cycle. And within the peak hour, the larger percentage of, the more failed cycles there are in the peak hour, the lower the grade. There's a corresponding grade for that. In comparison with last year's map, there was one improved traffic shed at the intersection of Ebenezer and Pulaski Highway. Last year, that traffic shed was an F, and this year, it has, because of improvements done at the intersection, it has shown to become a D intersection now. In terms of the effects of development from our guidelines is F intersections, there are moratoriums for development within that traffic shed. And for E intersections, there is a semi-moratorium. You could, there's development, but only if it generates a threshold number of trips. And in the D, they're not considered deficient yet, but it's more like a warning sign it's about to go D to F, or D, E or F. That's it for my presentation. Is there any questions?
Members? Ms. Brophy?
Oh, that's right. Thank you for your presentation. So you said that you study traffic loads, right, at these intersections for the grading?
Oh, grade meaning letter grades.
Right, the link. So other than the last car on that loop of the green cycle, what else is taken into consideration, or is it just that?
For the letter grade itself, they are, that's what we look at, but however, while our inspectors are out there, they look at volumes.
Okay. So volume as in just like the speed of traffic?
Volumes meaning the number of vehicles passing through the intersection.
Okay. And then what kind of improvements have you guys done to improve the grade levels?
For the one in Ebenezer and Pulaski, there was a widening along Ebenezer Road to accommodate a new right-turn pocket. So there increased capacity for one of the legs.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Wolfson?
Thank you. We go further down around the loop, and we get to Route 40 and Rolling Road. And that has been on the list for a very long time. Are there any improvements suggested for that area?
Or which intersection?
Baltimore National Pike and Rolling Road.
Okay. That is a state intersection, so we need something in coordination with the state to do their improvements on that.
Since it's in the county, how closely do you work with them to improve the intersection?
That'd be something where, like, it might need a capital project, and it's where discussions take place. But it could, I mean, I think our current director is trying to be more proactive in trying to improve these intersections.
Mr. Warren?
I think part of the problem in the county is we haven't built a lot of new roads, so we tend to drive a lot of traffic into small service roads. Is there any plan to add a basic plan or map to add additional roads and larger service roads?
Not that I know of.
Any other questions from the board? Mr. Ray Ray?
Is the traffic flow, I mean, share, is, is that, we give it high priority in terms of repairs or expansion?
No, I think that we primarily just use this as, this map is used for development control primarily, so development cannot go in there to generate more traffic in the shed. However, there is an exception area. There are revitalize, I forgot to mention this, there are revitalization districts which are exempt from the traffic shed. So I believe development can go on in the revitalization districts.
So F stands for what? What does F mean?
F is fail. Yeah.
If it's fair, E is failing.
Yes.
Do you give it high priority?
To, for improvements?
Yes.
That's something we could take a look at.
Any other questions? Mr. Warren? We're revitalization.
Is it considered revitalization?
Yes. Ms. Plaza, does any of your other department heads have any comments?
Um, no.
Do the board members have any other questions? Okay, if not, thank you so much. We appreciate that from your department.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
We will now call upon those of you that have completed the sign-in sheet located in the Jefferson Building lobby to speak on this topic. In order that you registered, speakers, please remember you have two minutes. Please provide your name and the organization you represent, if you do represent an organization. We will now begin with Ms. Bensley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First up, we have Winnie Carpenter.
My name is Winnie Carpenter. I'm here on behalf of myself. I live in District One, Oella, Eloquent City, Baltimore County. Our area is impacted by three level service, level of service F intersections. In May of 2022, a property was carved out from the failing traffic shed by the county council. This property included the entire boundary of the Eloquent Mills National Historic District and its entirety in a floodplain along Frederick Road. In our area, I've seen an increase in traffic on Frederick Road over the past eighteen years. Frequently, drivers who are frustrated with the volume are seeking routes through our neighborhoods. During, due to the proximity of Oella to Frederick Road, consideration is needed during any updates to the Basic Services Maps to also include the Oella National Historic District. Without proper planning initiatives, adverse impacts to residents, small businesses, and visitors will continue. Our roads in our neighborhoods have hazards that have not been taken into account. Winding and narrow, winding and narrow roads, including limited sight distance, inadequate sidewalks, a one-lane road, and a one-lane bridge. These roads, like Frederick Road, are used frequently by walkers, many times with dogs, parents with strollers, runners, and cyclists. Please look closely at the complications of our failing traffic shed in District One and not arbitrarily approve a map that excludes areas that are significantly impacted. So I ask you this evening to approve the draft 2023 Transportation Map in District One as it is presented this evening.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Next up, we have Renee Hamidi.
Thank you so much for letting me speak. I'm Renee Hamidi. I'm the Executive Director of the Valleys Planning Council. County zoning regulations say that important public facilities in certain predominantly urban areas of the county are inadequate to serve all of the development that would be permitted under regulations. Basic Services Maps are established to regulate non-industrial development in underserved areas. Before I came here today, I reviewed the Basic Services Maps public hearing from 2022. At that time, there was an area of special concern in Brooklynville, shown on the sewerage map, just like the one that you saw today. A year ago, Mr. Bayer said that the process of making improvements had been started. There were two projects in the works. One was being designed, and the other required easements. To date, no improvements in the area of concern have been made. Despite this, last year, a thirty-one home development called Torch Hill in the area of concern was approved. Another sixty-home development called Greenspring Manor is in the area of concern. We'll conclude its development hearing next week. But adding another ninety homes to an area where residents are already experiencing sewage backups in their homes isn't the biggest problem. The MAP County Council appears to have approved. The one DPWT shows on its website for 2022 doesn't seem to show the Brooklynville area of concern at all, and I've been unable to determine why. You heard a presentation about failing traffic intersections. There are three failing traffic intersections within a little more than half a mile on Falls Road. The northernmost of the three, Seminarian Falls, is just outside the Erdle. Failing intersections outside the Erdle don't have failing traffic sheds associated with them, but just one-third of a mile east of that intersection, just inside the Erdle, is Torch Hill, the thirty-one home development. For that development and for the sixty-home development that is very close to the failing traffic intersection at Joppa and Falls, developers have proposed improvements to the intersections. Residents are skeptical and doubtful that the added traffic for more developments will improve the intersections even with the improvements proposed by the developers. I'm telling you this so you understand that the Basic Services Maps.
Thank you.
May not be what they seem. They don't appear to be protecting areas of the county from overdevelopment.
If you want to give that to the board, we can, we can, well, take a look at it.
Pardon? It's all scribbled.
Okay, we're used to that.
I'm trying to take notes. Okay. Can I do that?
Yes, you can. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions from the board? Any of our speakers? There's none? I do that. Thank you.
One question of clarification, if I could. She just mentioned that in the Brooklynville area that there was backup of sanitary sewers and basements. But I thought I heard in the presentation, the reason it was on the map was because of storm, stormwater issues. So is, is there a disconnect there, or did I misunderstand?
Hopefully, I can answer your question.
Yep.
When it, when there's heavy rain, the water infiltrates, groundwater infiltrates into the sewer system. So I think maybe there's a confusion.
One causes the other.
Stormwater versus sanitary sewer. So.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other questions from the board? Okay. If there are no other questions or comments, this concludes our public hearing. This matter is scheduled for a vote on February 16, 2023, the Planning Board meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the Capital Improvement Program Subcommittee will meet at 5:30. Thank you all for attending, and thank you for taking the time to come here.
Or earlier. Can we?
Well, why don't, well, me.
Does a committee member presence with us this evening? When you hear your name, please say aye. Ms. Hafford?
Aye.
Mr. Ari?
Aye.
Ms. Brophy?
Aye.
Mr. Fotus?
Aye.
Ms. German?
Aye.
Mr. Heckman?
Aye.
Mr. Heinel is absent. Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. McGuinness?
Aye.
Pearlows absent. Ms. Panero?
Aye.
Mr. Warren?
Aye.
Ms. Wolfson?
Aye.
Thank you. Tonight, we are meeting in a work session to hear from Baltimore County Public Schools and the Community College of Baltimore County. After each presentation, members of the committee will have the opportunity to ask questions of the presenters. I want to note that if, even if there are members of the community in and attended of tonight's meeting, this meeting has not been designed to accept comments from citizens. The Planning Board held a citizen input meeting on October 20, 2022, which was the opportunity for the board to hear from citizens on their issues concerning the capital improvement. Now, I would like to invite Dr. Darrell Williams from Baltimore County Public Schools to begin the presentation on the school budget. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Chair Hoffer, Vice Chair Aluka, and members of the board. My name is Darrell Williams, Superintendent of Schools in Baltimore County, Public Schools. I'm here to present our capital improvement program for FY '24. And with me today, we have Pete Dixitt, our Executive Director, Department of Facilities, Management, and Strategic Planning; Mr. Merrill Plait, Director of Facilities Construction Improvement; and Mr. Paul Taylor, Director of Strategic Planning. I would like to thank you for supporting our capital improvement programs. In the past, our priorities continued to be recommendations on the high school program from, from the multi-year program, improvement program for all schools, or MYIPASS, and the infrastructure improvements. Our school system has continued to move forward in creating equitable learning environments that would result in globally competitive graduates. Our curriculum and instructional elements are developed to not only challenge and engage our students, but also to afford the opportunity for learning to take place in buildings designed to meet modern educational standards along with building and operating efficiencies. With that, I would like to transfer the presentation to Mr. Pete Dixitt and his team.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Chair Nancy Havel and Vice Chair Scott.
Could you step up to the, so that we can get it recorded?
Thank you.
We can all hear too.
We can all hear too.
That too.
Good evening again. Can you hear me now? So, uh, good evening, Chair Hafford, Vice Chair Scott Alupka. My name is Pete Dixit. I'm Executive Director for Facilities Management and Strategic Planning with Baltimore County Public School and member of Dr. Williams' team. So we have prepared a brief presentation, if you want to call it brief, and we'll go slide by slide. On my side is Mr. Plate, who's the Director of Construction Improvement, and Mr. Taylor, who's the Director of Strategic Planning. The first slide that you see here, it's, it shows you that our program supports focus area five, operational excellence, uh, key initiative being improved school facilities system-wide, and key initiative five, maintain schools in a state of good repair. The next slide shows you a schedule of MYI-PASS. It is the multi-year improvement plan for all schools that we shared with you in our presentation last year. I'm pleased to share that that has been completed, and it forms the roadmap or, or a guiding document for our capital improvement endeavors. This slide is an inventory of all of the schools we have in the system. I'm not going to read all of them. There is one here which is saying other, so I just want to clarify that. Other means that it, the grade configuration for that school is grade four through eight, which is Halliburton Middle School. The next series of five slides that you see, this is the gist of what we are sharing with you and what we are here to get your approval. And that's the, uh, five slides, the priority one through six are Deer Park, Scott's Branch, Dundalk High School addition. This, these are the schools that are for, um, for the, the amount needed for construction. And priority seven is a request for a new high school in the northeast area. This is a result of the Northeast Asia High School Study that was included in the multi-year improvement plan for all schools. Priority eight through nine is for different projects in the southeast area. That was also a recommendation included in the multi-year plan for all schools. Just to clarify that, seven through, the, seven through nine, northeast area will more than likely will have one school at this time from what we know. Southeast area will, may have more than one school, part of which is Potapsco High School addition. The other part could be the renovation of the Sparrows Point, but in order to do that, we may have to build a middle school or an elementary school, and that is still under consideration. We're looking for site. This, the priority eleven is Towson High School, which is the like-new school in that area. And twelve through thirteen is Delaney High School, which is a replacement school. Fourteenth is another recommendation, uh, under the MYI-PASS, and this is for northeast, northwest, uh, Career and Technology Education Center. And then from there on, you will see priorities, uh, fourteen through, fifteen through forty-eight are for different systemic projects. Systemic projects are those projects that impact an entire building system. Could be mechanical, could be electrical, could be a roof, and we have given the project description in that slide. This slide shows you the major projects that, that we removed from the list that we shared with you last year because they are fully funded. Lanstown High School was fully funded from the FY twenty-twenty-three capital funds, and all of the systemic projects that were fully funded have been removed. This slide gives you enrollment projections for the Baltimore County Public School. The, the key thing that we wanted to share with you, that there is a slight, slight downtrend in our projections due to pandemic, and eventually, uh, our experts are telling us that we will be able to get back over a few years. We don't know for how many years. But the projections at this time, this is a snapshot at this time, indicate that there'll be approximately three thousand students less as a system. These projections are updated every year, and we share with you in our presentation. This gives you, uh, the school utilization based on the data that we have for twenty twenty-one. The green means they are within capacity in that area. Yellow means they are in the hundred to hundred and fifteen percent zone, and the red or orange means they are above hundred and fifteen percent. The next three slides show our attempt to improvement in school utilization before the completion of capital improvement project included in this presentation and after the implementation of these projects. So this, so the, uh, view on the left-hand side is the current utilization, and the right-hand side is the post-two thousand twenty-four capital improvement program, which means once the projects that are listed in here, they are completed, what you will see is what's on the right-hand side. And this slide is for elementary school. The next slide is for the middle school. Middle school, we are in much better shape than the other categories. You'll see most of it green on the right-hand side. So once all the projects are completed, we are all within, uh, within the hundred percent range. The final slide here in this series of slides is the utilization before the projects are completed and after the projects are completed. So in the high school, you'll see that the red areas are in the central or northern part of the county, and the red area are on the southeast part of the county. Later on in the presentation, we'll show you some of the schools that are already, and that we shared with you earlier, are from the northern part and from the southeast part. The next ten slides indicate the schools that are overcrowded, more than hundred percent, fifteen percent capacity utilization, as well as the location of the projects that are included in twenty twenty-four. This slide of, is of the southwest area. Opening of Lanstown, uh, provided relief to Lanstown and Baltimore Highlands. Opening, this is the elementary schools, sorry, did I say elementary, elementary schools? Opening of new and expanded Chadwick Elementary School in August added three hundred seats, and capacity relief boundary study for Dogwood and Johnny Cake Elementary School was completed in the spring of two thousand nineteen and implemented in August of twenty twenty. The southeast area projects that are included in the capital improvement program that we are sharing with you today is Woodmore Elementary, Hill Thorpe, Westchester Elementary, Winfield Elementary School, and Woodbridge Elementary School. Coming to northwest area, um, one of the twenty-one schools exceeded hundred and fifteen percent utilization, and for secondary school, Deer Park Middle exceeded hundred and fifteen percent. All of the high schools, uh, were within, were less than, they did not exceed hundred and fifteen percent. In the, in the, in the program that you have for the northwest area, replacement schools included are Deer Park Elementary and Scott's Branch. Planning study, uh, is, uh, in the final stages of the educational specification is the northwest area Career and Technology School that we have been talking about. The systemic renovations included here are Chatsworth Mechanical Upgrade, Glendon Elementary Mechanical Upgrade, Owens Mills Elementary Mechanical, Millbrook Elementary Electrical Upgrade, and Timber Grove Elementary School for Mechanical Upgrade. Central area so far is pretty good in the elementary school. There are no elementary schools that exceed hundred and fifteen percent capacity utilization. No middle school exceed hundred and fifteen percent. Towson High School exceeded hundred and thirty percent, and, uh, the like-new replacement, uh, is included in the capital improvement pro- program being presented to you right now. There is a school that is going to be proposed for the northeast area. We are still, uh, under the study stage. Towson and Delaney are included in the capital program. Systemic renovations are, I'm not going to read all of them. Cocke Eastwood, Hereford, Lockraven, White Oak School, Padonia, and Pretty Boy. Coming to the northeast area, two elementary schools exceeded hundred and fifteen percent. Additional relief with the opening of the new Red House Run Elementary School. They'll be coming in near future. All the secondary school, and none of the middle school exceed hundred and fifteen percent, and no high school exceed hundred and fifteen percent. Overly and Parkville, uh, will exceed in future, but at this time, it is not. The, what is included in the program that we have presented to is a planning study for Northeast Asia High School Study and systemic renovation for Perry Hall High, Pine Grove Elementary, Shadings, Shady Spring, Fullerton Elementary School, and Middlesex Elementary School. Southeast area, um, Deep Creek Elementary exceeded hundred and fifteen percent. Uh, secondary school, no middle school exceed hundred and fifteen percent in southeast area. Dundalk High was hundred and thirty-eight point six, and Sparrows Point High School exceeded hundred and twenty-nine point six. Addition for Dundalk High School is included in the plan that you have, and the, the study is being done for the Sparrows Point area. So this slide shows the projects' relationship with the socially vulnerable areas of Baltimore County. The one on the extreme left is for elementary school. In the middle is for the middle school, and one on the right is for high schools. This slide is to show, uh, the environment and sustainability effort that are included in our programs in the past. Deer Park Elementary School that is in the design stage, it will be the first net-zero school in Baltimore County. Dundalk, Solars Point, and Dundalk Elementary School both achieved LEED Gold Certification. All other new and replacement schools built since twenty-ten meet or exceed LEED Silver Certification. So these were the key highlights. They, we, we comply with all the state and local requirements in the energy and sustainability area. This is to show our accomplishments. Currently, there are five schools in design. Deer Park Elementary School, Scott's Branch Elementary School, Dundalk High School addition, Towson High School, and Delaney High School. Then there are another set of five schools that are in construction. Bedford Elementary, Summit Park, Pine Grove Middle School, New Northeast Area Middle School, and Lanstown High School. Schools opened recently in twenty-twenty, Rossville Elementary School. This is to share with the Planning Board some of the challenges we are facing. Labor shortage is impacting construction market tremendously, similar to all other areas of economy, but we are really hard hit. Some of the increase in construction costs are in the range of twenty to thirty percent. That increase is quite rapid. In the last twelve to eighteen months period, there have been supply chain issues, limited supplies of key components and materials, and long delivery time. So we are not as certain now as we were in the past about completion time of project, but our team continues to make all the efforts that we can to expedite these projects. Ongoing work and collaboration. All of you have heard about Blueprint for Maryland's Future. This will, uh, uh, this will give us some, uh, extra work in accommodating the increase in pre-K students. Lafarge Quarry, as you have heard, County Resolution one twenty-three, has directed us to study that site, and we are in the process of doing it. Northwest area, CTE Center, uh, we talked about it before. That's one of the very exciting projects that is part of our ongoing work. And the southeast area site, which is a difficult area in terms of availability of site, and, and we are actively looking for site in that area. So, um, that marks the end of our presentation. I'd like to take this opportunity, uh, to express our gratitude for your support and for all the funding that we have received, uh, from county and from state. We are open for questions. We'll try to answer all your questions if we can. We'll get back to you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to start on this end and work my way around. Mr. Warren?
Is school on the, uh, southeast side that was in the report that the county executive had got last year, that was actually ahead of Towson and Delaney is on the need side? Is that the school that you're planning for, or is that, is that, was that, was that the high school at Sparrows Point, or was that the high school at Delaney? And what's going on there?
So, good question. In the, in the MYI-PASS, they recognize the priority in the northeast area and southeast area. The study gave us three options, uh, and really, all of the options, the most liked or supportive, option from the community was to either build an elementary school or build a middle school and then renovate high school. Unfortunately, we cannot renovate high school until we do one of the two for the other schools. So we are actively looking for site. Once we find, then we'll work with county. County has been very supportive of our efforts, and we are working together. But in the meantime, other schools are going on, other schools, whatever schools are ready to go, we are working on them.
But it was at the highest need on that report. So what, like, have we done stuff to improve the school? Are we just waiting until we can find, like, it, I think it was a number of things. It was, you know, technology and a bunch of things that school was lacking behind other schools.
Yeah.
Just because it's down in the southeast, we shouldn't forget about it. But, you know, like, what are we doing with the existing facilities? We don't have plans for new facilities.
So major technology improvement is done during construction and renovation, but there are ongoing effort to improve technology in all schools, including southeast area high school.
Mr. Brophy, do you have your hand raised?
Um, yeah. So first of all, thank you for your presentation. I was a teacher in Baltimore County Public Schools for a few years, so I know all the work that you guys go through. I do have two questions. So the first one's just general. If you go back to that social vulnerability map, I, I don't really know if I understand what you were saying there.
Okay. So, the, yeah. The dot means a project that is included in the program, in, in the program that is in front of you right here.
Okay.
And the pink area show the socially vulnerable area. So the purpose is to show relationship of our, of our project with the socially vulnerable area. That's the purpose of it.
So what, what defines, like, a socially vulnerable area? I see it says, like, Baltimore County PSAT refers, but like, what is those negative effects?
Okay, let, let me see if I can get the official. It refers to the potential negative effects. It refers to the potential negative effects on communities caused by external stresses on human health. Such stresses include natural or human caused dis- disasters, disease outbreaks. Reducing social vulnerability can decrease both human suffering and economic loss.
Oh, I see. So it's it's external factor.
Ex- external, you are absolutely right.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question was, um, a lot of the um, I guess, capacity issues that you're addressing with the new schools and improvements and expansions. Since enrollment continues to project downward even before the pandemic on your graph there. Do you feel that that projection is going to continue to decrease and that will naturally alleviate some of your capacity issues?
It's a good question and I wish I had the complete answer. So let me try. We we prepare, Mr. Taylor's department prepares um projections for every school every year. And we continue to try to monitor it. And this group here under construction and improvement, they are designing school at the same time. So the challenge is to calibrate, optimize the capacity for the schools that we are designing. So far, we rarely get to a situation where we designed for too many students. The problem always is that once we complete construction, more and more students come. So it's difficult to keep uh after the right number that that's going to come in the future. Dundalk High School is a good example, uh exceptional school designed about ten years ago. And we keep getting more and more students there. So now we are building addition. But Tapsco is the same way that we designed, we renovated that school and more students came. So continue to adjust that.
Thank you very much.
Other questions down this way? Ms. Wolfson?
Well, if that's the case, I would highly recommend you rebuild Winfield Elementary School on the west side to bring more students in and make more people want to go to that school. It was built nineteen sixty-six. I went there. And it is a very depressing school, very economically. Um a lot of homeless children go to school there. So if you think that building a new school will help that school and those kids that go to it, that I would highly recommend that go on the list.
And and we hear you and we support your statement. The challenges that we have, the need that we have, according to my I pass, is about two point five to three billion dollar more than the revenue that's being projected coming in over next fifteen years. So the challenge is to optimize and prioritize properly.
Well, it it is wonderful that you're replacing Scott's Branch. I think that was built in sixty-two, sixty-three. So that's that's a real coup.
Thank you. Thank you for your question.
Uh Hereford High School has become a very popular destination for people wanting to move away from the city. They have currently one of the highest participation rates, after-school participation rates in the county and the state. They have also won more uh local, I mean, individual and team uh sports awards, probably in any team in the county or state. However, there is needs and associated with that. Each year, the board makes recommendations for changes and adjustments in the county budget. I'm aware that you see those when they're voted on each year. I mean, are you aware of them? Because we have not, we do not receive any feedback as to what you plan, whether you reject or whether you approve or what you plan to do with those suggestions. Are you aware that in the last six or seven years, the board has voted to increase the gym capacity at Hereford High School? Are you aware of that?
So like any school, we try to prepare a um a program for school construction. And the challenge that we have is competing needs. Some schools.
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you. Uh as a former phys ed teacher, I I'm used to projecting a little bit.
Okay, so let me try one more time. Uh maybe you can hear me now?
Yes.
So uh like Ms. Wolfson just in- indicated, there are schools that we don't have funds to replace. There are schools that need renovation. There are needs in boiler and chillers. So the job that we have is to take the existing amount that we have and equitably decide uh divide over all the needs. So we'll keep that in mind and the next time we have the funding available, we'll take care of that additional needs for the effort. We recently renovated Hereford five, six year ago. And we are very proud of what we did to that school. It's exceptional school.
Are you aware that about forty years ago, when they renovated the high school, they converted the existing gym, the one that I played in and coached in, to two classrooms? And uh they built a new gym that was not sufficient to handle for just a senior high, all the needs of a senior high. Are you aware that that existing gym is still there and could be converted at a much less cost than building a new one?
So we can investigate that. Uh I hear what you are saying. We'll go back and see. And we'll see if we can get the funds for that gym.
And there's space right next to the existing gym, which could be easily added to for additional space. And as you well aware, today, the uh teams are and the after-school activities are almost year-round. And uh recreation also uses these facilities, after-school activities. So there is a tremendous need, but it's a little hard for the parents up there to drive twenty miles to Towson to appear to some hearing. And the parents, some of them have to drive ten to fifteen miles to come to the school for activities. So it's important that things be concentrated more in the center where the school is.
Thank you, Mr. McD.
Thank you. Thank you for your question.
Mr. German?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dixitt. And Dr. Williams, thanks for your service to Baltimore County Public Schools. I'm Bev German. Um I'm a retired Baltimore County principal and at uh at Pine Grove Middle. And have spent my entire life in Baltimore County schools and now work for Towson University. So I'm all in with the education thing. Still enjoy it. Um I represent District Five. So there's some unhappy folks that I represent about the northeast area high school um plan. And I'm sure that comes as no surprise. One uh uh and great presentation, but when I see a northeast area replacement school listed in the central area, to me, that just sums up the frustration of the folks that live in Perry Hall. Um my daughter, my daughter's a school nurse at Sparrow's Point Middle High. We're we're all in the Baltimore County. And she graduated from Perry Hall High School. Those schools in Perry Hall have been severely overcrowded, as you know, for a very long time. Not the fault of the school system. I I realize that. A lot of uh development that just took on a life of its own. But I have to tell you, when I, and I know that my pass did a great job. I mean, that was a very well-planned analysis. But when I saw the recommendation that they make a big high school on the same site as Lockraven High School that's not even in our geographic area, I I have to tell you, I was appalled at that recommendation. And I think what happens sometimes, and I know that data is very important. I think that we are too data-driven and maybe we need to be just data-informed. And the data and data needs to be quantitative and qualitative. And so you're dealing with feelings in the northeast area when we've had a very long period of time, and and there's been, you know, some relief, obviously, with the the new school at Rossville and um I know the new middle school is will be terrific and it'll be over there in in uh on King Avenue. But I hope that, I'm I'm hoping that the Lafarge property um will be a site that can be used so that a school can be built closer to home for our kids than having to travel, having to travel to the central area. The other thing that I I'm hopeful for is that it's not a vocational school. If if they are able to build a school somewhere in the northeast, they're at new high school in the northeast, is that it's a pathway school where we take, you know, we have kids that want to be teachers. They start in high school in the Teacher Academy of Maryland program. They seamlessly move to the community college and then maybe are hired by Baltimore County as halftime paris. And then they end up at my place, Towson University, and we have great teachers. We can do the same thing pathways for nurses, for law enforcement, and then for the skilled trades. Uh I mean, there's so many and um I know, Dr. Williams, you're from Montgomery County originally. They're doing some great things in Montgomery County with pathways. I mean, I'd like to see it called Pathways High School. Um but we really need to think outside the box and we need to think about the human factor as well as the numbers. And I feel like we've lost that a little bit.
Oh, thank you for um your comments. This is actually came up in our last board meeting. So in those discussions, um board agreed to remove the central at location, they see for central to remove that and to look at other options, including Lafarge. We're so grateful that the county council made that resolution as uh and expanded that instead of uh constricting it to a particular s- school uh to provide more options. And you're right on target um with what we have expanded alternative schools, not in terms of moving students out of comprehensive, but providing more options for students. So we are providing um even extended day, evening hours for students who have to work. And those pathways, I just met with the president, uh President Carmichael of Northwest Hospital as we looking at our our um middle school and high school partnerships to the hu- to the hospitals. Definitely with teachers, the TAM Program Teachers of America for Mar- Teachers Academy for Maryland. Expanding that and even offering um open contracts for our interns who are in our building, thank you so much, um in our buildings now, because across the board, across the nation, there's a shortage. So because of what we've experienced, we are now looking at education completely different and expanding, looking at year-round, evening hours. And definitely we'll be looking at the particular area, northeast area, and looking at many options. Um at the time, we were constricted with the with the facilities that we had and and there were limited options. Thanks to the county council, I believe David Marks and team, we were able to now look at an additional property. So we'll be expanding and and the team has a deadline to actually look in, look at that facility or the the land to see what we can actually do. Um but also schooling now doesn't always have to rest within the four walls. You know, because of what we learned with the pandemic, we learned to do things online, just like the universities are doing now. Uh although I sometimes prefer that face-to-face and the relationship and character building and just getting the socialization. But now we have some more options, in particular, working with our friends at CCBC. We have partnered to do things differently. So thank you for that. Uh it's causing us to look at how we're educating our students differently, because we need to meet their needs. And going to school from seven to three may not meet their needs or in a particular building as well. So thank you for those comments.
Thank you. That's really good news.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Williams. And let me personally thank you uh for your effort in education, for teaching. Uh I'm a very proud father of two kids who went to Perry Hall High School. And I have lived in that area for a long, long time. So I totally understand what you're saying.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Then I want to thank Dr. Williams, Dr. Um uh your staff for their presentation. And I think we will now turn to invite Dr. Kurt Naitis and uh Ms. Melissa Hop, Vice President of Administrative Services from CCBC, to begin their presentations. Do we have to read the whole book?
They have to quiz him. I'm just checking how it works.
Are you ready? Are you ready?
I'm just trying to watch how the clicker works here. I did the wrong thing already.
Uh yeah.
Okay, that's great. Thanks. Can you restore it? I'm trying. There we go. There we go.
Well, good evening. Thank you very much for giving us this chance. We always, we are actually as our school colleagues were concluding and he gave us a nice plug as a real strong partner of the K through twelve system. And uh if we had world enough in time, we would tell you wonderful news about that partnership. Twenty-seven hundred students from um the school system are taking right now classes at CCBC and they do it under the blueprint for free. So that's enough of that little story, because it's a big story. So thank you very much. Um you know, when we come here, we always like to try to give you, this is my job, to give you some context for why and how uh your support is so valuable to the work that we're doing. So are you, will you do that?
I'll do it.
Okay, so so what I want you to know is that your community college is coming out of the pandemic with strength and vision. And so we've sort of framed uh our next steps this way. Frame reframing the conversation. We're not going to just be who we were in March of twenty twenty. Investing in our future and you're you're going to help us do that, we hope. And also leading with equity with, which for us means that recognizing that almost everything we do has to be filtered through the lens of who is sitting in our classrooms today. And so our requests to you this evening will actually re- reflect a lot of the philosophy that we're bringing to bear. Twenty-first century college for twenty-first century students for twenty-first century jobs. We're not fooling around. We're we're really serious about this. So let me tell you just a couple of things that are great news. And I want you to know that we had our ten-year accreditation visit. I I heard you mention that you're at Towson, so you understand what middle states can do.
Thrilled.
What was that?
You you must be thrilled.
Oh, we are, because we 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 graduated with um, I think, summa cum laude in terms of doing this right in the middle of a pandemic, which is not easy. So I just am proud to you to tell you, we received our re-accreditation last summer and once again certified as a well-run, well-organized, mission-centric institution, absolutely committed to student success. So this is for us like winning an Oscar. And it was uh hard work and well-done. But also, when I talk about leading with equity, I I do want you to know that your col- your community college is actually deep into this work. We were recognized by our National Association of, it's actually the Association of Community College Trustees. Those are our trustees and me and actually the head of the ACCT. We, out of a thousand community colleges, three or four hundred of them will apply for a grant, for a, an award like this. They picked us and we're really proud of that, because the work that we're doing is serious and intense. And so, Melissa, if you just do the next one. What we're doing, though, at CCBC is we we have two mantras. One is, every one of us counts. Doesn't matter, man, woman, black, white, gay, straight, able-bodied, disabled, you can go down the whole list. That's who we are. That's who we represent. And that's who we find in our classrooms. But words are ephemeral and it's really action that counts. And so I've I've shared with you in our past, um over the past two years, that your community college is the only co- only two or four college in this state that stayed open during the pandemic. And by doing so, we had plenty of students and faculty online, yes. But we were able to serve eight thousand students for whom remote instruction was simply not possible. We did that for two years in a row until we actually were able to get most of us back on campus. So if you click that, Melissa, this is what I mean by taking actions that matter. Not only staying open during the pandemic for people who needed us, but all of those decisions, all of but all of those decisions, all of those actions really embedded in the way we look at and the way we think about our role in our communities right now. And if you would, one more, Melissa. If, if you think about it, we, we have plenty of doctor's sons and lawyer's daughters sitting in our classrooms. But you can see from the, the numbers on the screen that truly our student body is made up largely of the most vulnerable of students. And we are here with our open door mission to make sure that we can serve them. These are the students who do, in fact, come to CCBC, and as we present our requests to you this evening, this is, it is on behalf of these students. Notice last year, we had just done, just over 48,000 students, and half of them in short-term credentials, half of them in degree credentials. But it's, it's the statistics such as average age of 38, 60% women, 57% now minority with African-American the largest number. But 89% of these students attend part-time. That's an incredibly powerful number that tells you who sits in our seats. Many people who have families, they have full-time jobs, kids in soccer leagues and so forth. And so you can go all around that list and get a very good sense of who we are serving when we ask you to support our capital needs. But the, one of the things we are most proud of is that we have been able to use stimulus money, HIRF money. In fact, I think if you look at our stats, we, we've given almost all of our HIRF money to students, either in scholarship or in the, the, meeting the needs of students in, during COVID, providing support for, for them. But when I look at that number of 85% of CCBC students received either full or partial scholarships, that again, just like staying open during the pandemic, is what I want you to sort of keep, keep kind of close to your heart, because that is who the community college of Baltimore County is. We could have done a lot of things with money that we got, and most of it we gave to students. A couple of other good things, thanks to Melissa Hop's great leadership and her financial team. This is the 24th year that we received this important and impressive award for financial reporting. Next one, when Governor Hogan was announcing his American Rescue Plan for wind, wind energy, you see who he turned to, to do the training. CCBC will be doing a million dollars worth of training for the wind project. And when the Bloomberg philanthropies were looking for a partner for their Bridging the Gap program, this is Goldman Sachs, see who they picked as their community college. They could have picked any of the six of us around Baltimore, and they selected us. And finally, in, just in terms of bragging, the, the Maryland Department of Labor presented our college with their apprenticeship award this year, because we have now 3,000 students in apprenticeship programs, some in the trades, some in healthcare, some in technology. It's, I heard someone mention a trade school earlier, and, you know, in part, that's who we are. Wanted to let you know that nothing we bring to you is careless or incautious. We are in the middle of a strategic planning process that will actually help us, help us achieve four major goals. And all of this is tied in with, when I said to you, we're coming out of this pandemic with vision and strength. We are really serious about achieving a set of goals that actually will be based on enrollment growth that is targeted to be pretty significant in many. Those images don't mean a lot to you, but they mean a lot to us. Six major, powerful programs moved forward, and we hope that will bring us to significant enrollment growth. I, I would like to sort of bring my part to an end by sharing with you a little news, news reel that some of you may actually have seen. We are partnering with the county, with the St. Joseph's Hospital. And as you can see, our legislators, our senator, senators came and helped us actually roll this out. So Melissa, if we could just, if it works, it's short, but it's really.
Well, between the pandemic, the resulting worker shortage, and the new surgeon RSV cases, it has been a tough couple of years for nurses on the front lines. To this day, it is a struggle to hire enough people to properly staff hospitals. And that can be bad news if you and your family need care. However, there is a new hope tonight. Our new reporter, Dennis Valera, explains how a new partnership in Baltimore County could make a big difference.
Beginning, our nurses have been on the front lines of the COVID-19 pandemic, and it continues to be an uphill battle.
Despite those immeasurable challenges we have seen in healthcare over these last three years, I will tell you, we're still fighting.
And they're fighting it with far less staff. Nicole Beeson, St. Joseph's Chief Medical Officer, says one in four nurses have left.
We've had a huge amount of turnover at the bedside, higher numbers than we've ever seen. And so we are rebuilding and recruiting, but this will take time.
To help, St. Joseph is partnering with Baltimore County and the Community College of Baltimore County, creating the Public Health Pathways Program. The program will fully cover tuition for a CCBC certified nursing assistant program and will get a guaranteed job at St. Joseph, where they'll continue their education on site. They'll also get a $1,000 stipend a month, the goal of the program, take down the barriers to let more people in the door.
If a parent can't afford childcare that enables them to go to work, they'll never be able to get ahead. And if a student has a dream but can't afford the training they need, they'll be left behind.
Beeson knows this program's going to help fill her vacancies, because she went through it herself.
And it offered a schedule where I could still take care of my three very, very young children. And so not only did it serve as the foundation for my clinical practice, but it reminded me that there are others that need to continue to have access.
The first 30 to be in this pilot program will be announced early next year. They then begin their work in the summer. Reporting in Towson, I'm Dennis Valera for WJZ.
So what we're illustrating is, this is what we do. We partner with business, industry, government, community, and we serve the most vulnerable populations, and we do the best we can to give them opportunities of great significance. And so every year, just about 12, 13,000 of our students will graduate in one way or another, short-term credential, a degree, and they will enter the workplace and do what they do to bring strength and betterment to their communities. And our number, 93% of our graduates, will remain to live and work in Baltimore, in the Baltimore region. And that's part of why we come to you and say, please help us as we present our needs this year. They won't be extraordinary, they won't be extravagant, but they are very important to us to help. You can press the, the button, because this is who we are right now. We have eight campuses, counting our virtual campus, lots of needs. And one of my favorite sayings is 50 isn't a bad age for a person, but it's terrible age for a building. And so with that, I'm going to ask Vice President Hop to walk us through the specifics of our request.
Thank you. Thank you, President Kurt Naitis. I want to, I want to start by providing a little context for the facilities. And CCBC serves those 48,000 students in a facility. I, I'm sorry, sure, can you hear me better this way? Yeah. Will, serves those students in a facility of 1.8 gross square feet. So as we do that, we do that to leverage the dollars that you give us, not only with state money, but with student money through student fees and through grants. So be advised that every dollar that you give to us, we spend in a way that leverages it as much as possible and is also a green expenditure. CCBC, those of you that have driven by, of course, can't, can't help but notice our solar canopies that provide about 25% of our electrical usage on campus. That's one of our most visible sustainability efforts, but we have many other things. Single-stream recycling, a new one, now we compost all the restroom paper towels as a way to further reduce our waste and, and improve our green footprint. What I'm going to do now is kind of switch to what projects have we completed in the last year or are in progress. So let me say that I'll start first with our infrastructure projects. We have two buildings, two roofs. One is done, one will be done this summer. And we have an underground heating, cooling loop at CCBC Essex that is, is in design now and will be completed, we hope, in the spring of 2024. At CCBC Dundalk, we did some work, not very glamorous work, but work to really improve efficiency, cost savings, and productivity to move our facilities operations center into that new building that was built in May, thank you very much, in May of 2022, which allowed us to move out of that other building that doesn't look so good, that will now become our centralized vehicle maintenance facility. The very big project that we're very excited about is a $17.5 million project at CCBC Essex, where we're doing a renovation in addition to the Athletic and Wellness Center. The, it will provide a, a new fitness center, new dance studios, and then some reorganized circulation space and locker rooms. There, you can see what it looks like today. You can, that's the, the new fitness center jutting out of the, of the building. But we're also doing some glamorous things like putting in a new sprinkler system for the, for fire suppression. Also completed at the same time as this wellness project is some storm water management work. And again, not very, very important. And I know all of you on the planning board understand just how important it is to address storm water. And so we have our new bioretention facilities that are in the parking lot, actually very close to the wellness center. So that kind of summarizes where we are in our current projects. Let me talk to you about where we want to go this coming year. I sounded a whole lot better earlier today. I'm so sorry.
I would take over, except I, I, my part is the first part, that I know. This is, this is her world.
So, looking at the 24 budget, we ask for you to appropriate in this next biennium 19,250,000. And you might say, well, we only got bonds for 18.5. And that's true. We're adding 750 of student fees to what will be appropriated. And this is, of course, the, the county provides funds every two years. That would be the 19, too. And what we have secured and is currently in Governor Moore's budget is 6.7 just for '24, and then additional money in '25. I'm going to go through the projects. The biggest one is a $40 million project to renovate the Student Services Center at CCBC Catonsville. I, you know, we were talking a little bit earlier about buildings that were built in the 60s that have had better days. This Student Services Center wasn't built in the 60s, but not much farther, right in the early 70s. You can tell from the style, and has seen better days. So what we're, here's an example of, while it, it looks pretty, it's really not an appropriate way for students to gather, to register for their classes, pay their bills. It's just not properly configured for the current size of the student body. So we propose to fix that. At the same time, we will upgrade our electrical and HVAC system in the building, fix the roof while you're doing it, ASAMADA and other code deficiencies, and really provide a contemporary environment for all users. Included in this project, you see now the side of the Student Services Building, the more, more modern-looking building. And it is adjacent to some old ruins, an old stone wall on the Catonsville campus. So what we'll do, since it is literally 10 feet away, we will take this opportunity to create an outdoor learning courtyard that has the benefit of stabilizing those ruins, highlighting the, the historic nature, but also providing good usable space for our students. So I told you, this is a $40 million project. In the past, and you, you identified funds for design, which is currently beginning. You'll see the funds for this next year, and then the following biennium, which will get us all the way through the $40 million project. At CCBC Dundalk, we also need to renovate the Student Services Center. But as I say that, the first floor is direct services to students. We already renovated that about six years ago, and expected that the second floor would follow very quickly thereafter. Well, this is the second floor, not so quickly thereafter. But what we will be doing on the second floor is, you know, is replacing the air handling units, the roof, but we'll also address some configurate, some circulation and office space at the same time. You'll see that you've previously provided $3.2 million for this project. In this budget, it's just a small amount from the county, but a much larger amount from the, from the state. And then, of course, it ends up as a 50/50 match. The third project, and those of, I, I see many familiar faces. And so you'll recall when I came and talked about the Catonsville Campus Switchgear. Well, the Catonsville Campus and the Essex Campus were built at about the same time. And now we need to replace the switchgear that is the main electrical distribution system for the Essex Campus, because in fact, 50 is about the end of the road for a switchgear. So that's a, just about a $15 million project. And what we're seeking right now is just the beginning of that project, the design money to figure out exactly what else we need to do. There's $2.3 million in roof projects, replacing the roof on the Wellness Center at CCBC Dundalk this year. And then next year, we have four more roofs, three at Essex and one at Catonsville. And then the following year, one at Catonsville and one at Essex. Lastly, we ask that you allocate $3.7 million for what we call Project Lastly, we ask that you allocate $3.7 million for what we call Project 100, and those are for those emergent needs. Certainly, we can identify all of our deferred maintenance and have done so. But you know, some of that becomes more urgent than others, like when the pipe breaks. And so, so this Project 100 is used for deferred maintenance, but we also allocate it for those emergency repairs that perhaps moved up faster than we had expected in, in the repair queue. And then lastly, you just saw the, the, the work we've begun for stormwater management at CCBC Essex. This is stormwater management, $2 million of stormwater management that we will begin at CCBC Catonsville. And in, and it's mostly small-scale controls, but we do ha, we do have the Patapsco Woods around the campus, where you can see many of these outfalls that need some additional Lastly, we, there are small allocations for asbestos abatement and ADA alterations that we'll use as bulk categories as the part of the project arrives. And then during the two years, a small amount of money for programmatic renovations on all of the campuses. So this, this shows you the '24 budget, but it also shows you both columns of state money. Obviously, they're only appropriate, the state's only appropriating a part of it right now, but they have this concept that they call split funding, where they say, well, when we start giving you the money for construction, we're not going to leave you high and dry. We'll give you the money as you need it based on your cash flow, but we promise in split funding that it becomes first straw on the next year's appropriation. So you can see that it's $19 million from the county, and then the, it ends up at $19 million from the state as well. Now, that takes us FY '24. I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't say, well, you know, we're also thinking about '26, '27. So we don't ask for any action today. But we do, we do want to foreshadow that we will ask for some more, to go up at least from 18.5 to 20 million every biennium. And, and if you can see your way in the future, we'd really like that number to be closer to 30 million. This kind of shows you where we have been, and we are very happy that last year, we had a nice infusion of one-time money of, of 8 million. You can see under the, under the yellow box is our current request, the 18.5. And as we go forward in '26, '27, and '28, '29, we'd sure like that to be closer to, to 30 million. But we're not asking today, we're just advising you of what we'll see in the future. And, and that will allow us to do many of these other projects, including the 40 million of delayed projects that we identify here. So thank you for putting up with my voice, and thank you really for, for your attention. We're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Ms. Hop and Dr. Kurtinitis. I'll start on this side this time and go around the other way. Mr. Harry?
Doctor, I just want to thank you and your team for a wonderful presentation with three, for me, three eye-catching items. No tuition increase since 2018, 50% textbook reduction, cost savings, and tuition-free initiatives. I don't know how you do it, but that is commendable. I just want you to know.
We're very proud of it.
And I live in Rosedale, and I see those panels, energy saving panels, 20% energy saving, that is also commendable. So I just want to thank you and your team.
Ms. Hopper?
I just want to thank you for everything you've done. During the pandemic, so many places shut down, and when young people were in such need, you stood there, you stood strong, and you helped so many. So we're very, very grateful for everything that you do, and you come back here year after year, and you just amaze us all. So thank you.
I got some chills. Thank you.
That's true. Mr. Warren, I saw your hand earlier.
Yeah, I, I echo the comments. I think, as I've said, I think I've been on this board nine or 10 years now. I think this is the best investment the county makes. Couple, couple things that I seen manufacturing pop up on your planning. Mike G. is a personal friend of mine, and, and couldn't ask for a better advocate for manufacturing, but-
And a great partner of ours, by the way.
Um, I think that we need to focus on the technical skills of what I would call STEM manufacturing or next-level manufacturing. And I think you guys are, you've proven what you do with the trucking and everything else that if I had to invest money, it would be with you guys on that. So I'd like to see you guys push that forward in any way you possibly can. The other thing is, every year, I've asked, and I know that you are underfunded as it relates to the state money that comes in.
Let me tell you, we got it.
You got it all this year?
Got it last, this, for this year.
All right.
Full funding of the Cade formula.
All right, well, that's awesome. That's what I'm-
You know how long it's taken? It was first legislated in 1996, and we finally got full funding.
And we are delighted to have full funding. Rest assured, full funding means we get 29 cents for every dollar that the universities get. So, I mean, we're happy to have it, but I just want to be clear.
We say, we say thank you, but-
And the county's matching the full amount that you would have gotten?
No, the county is a separate budget.
But I, I thought there was a, a matching fund component, and we underfund on the county side, or you would get more of the state money. Is that correct?
That, that, that's in capital. That's in the, that's in the capital. So we certainly have more projects to submit to, for state capital funding, but we have to have the local match.
How much are we shorting that from my county?
Set the 30, 30 million.
Let me say, we would be delighted if we had 30 million of biennium.
So if we did 30 million, it would, they would match 30 million.
They would.
So we're missing $11 million worth of funding into our county that the state would fund to us.
That, the, you know, we would have to compete with the other colleges, but of course, we think we would do the best.
Hello, Ms. Wilson?
You knew I couldn't resist. I'm sorry. Yours is a presentation, I think everyone will join me in saying that, like, we have to sit on our hands so we don't applaud when you're finished. You give such a great presentation. But in the context, we've been listening to other present, presentations, and I'm looking at Security Square Mall, and I'm looking at the truck driving component of Security Square Mall that is training truck drivers. But then I say, well, CCBC has a truck driving program. Do you know about how many graduates you're, you're getting out of, or how many students are achieving their CDL in that program annually? And if you could address that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, let me make a stab, and then, Melissa, if you have additional information, you can add it. We've, we've, we've been at Trade Point Atlantic now, on our site, for just about two years. The last number that the director gave me when I asked her a similar question was that there are 400 students in the queue waiting. But they have cohorts, and I think at least four, three, at least three at a time, and we're, we're working to expand this, where the, because of the limit, limited number of trucks, we can only have about 16 students in a cohort. But I will tell you that when they finish and get this credential, they walk into 25, 26, $28 an hour jobs. So we just, I'm not supposed to say this. We are-
Hypothetically.
Hypothetically, that's a good way to put it. Receiving an earmark, a federal earmark, which our delegation was successful in lobbying for us, $750,000. And because we believe everybody needs truckers, we will be expanding our CDL program. And we're hoping to be able to do that at Trade Point.
Excellent. Thank, thank you.
Thompson?
As everybody else has said, great presentation and, excuse me, wonderfully, wonderfully, wonderful job presenting. Just have a question while I was sitting here. Out of the campuses that you have, which is the oldest of the campuses, the CCBCs, which is the oldest? And then how are you determining how you're going to allocate your money? So are you going to do all, all of Essex, for example, all the things that Essex needs first, then go to Catonsville and finish those things? Or do you just kind of bounce around to?
Right. Let me just say, answer the first question, and you can answer the second. Catonsville and Essex were both begun in 1957, and both began in high schools. And then the state purchased the, the site of, for Catonsville Community College, and also then out of maybe the state or county who purchased the Essex campus. But they, and Dundalk's our baby. Dundalk was begun probably in '62, something like that. But you know better how we're measuring.
So, and, and the, the land that the Catonsville Campus is on has some historic facilities that we've, we've blended into the campus. And you saw, you know, the old stone wall and, and, and some of that. So I would, I would say that Cat, that Catonsville's facility's slightly older, but-
Well, yes, no, you're, you're correct, because the building was there, but the college was founded in '57.
Right. Now, as we go from project to project, we, we do that based on our master plan, and which takes into account program, space deficits, academic program, space deficits, along with our need for deferred maintenance. So we will, we do go from campus to campus. We don't do everything at one and, and until, because I'm not sure we'd ever get to the next, right?
That's true.
Other questions? I have one. I think you've mentioned before, how does, you know, CCBC's capital budgets compare to some of the other community colleges, some of your peer institutions?
Sure. I think it, it, it varies, but of, of course, Montgomery provides a significant amount more, as does Prince George's, and Anarundel, and Howard, all of which, I don't know Hartford's, but all of which provide more capital funding than Baltimore County.
Any other questions? Then, not seeing any. Yeah. Again, want to thank both of you. It's always a wonderful presentation. It's always great to hear what you guys are doing, and it's always amazing to hear of the different programs. If there are no further questions or comments, we will adjourn. I want to thank all of the presenters for their presentations this evening. The next meeting of the Planning Board Committee on the Capital Improvement Budget will be Thursday, February 16th, following our normally scheduled board meeting, to hear the staff recommendations. That meeting will be held in person in this room. Information for that meeting can be found on the Planning Board's website. Thank you all for attending tonight, and this meeting is hereby adjourned.